Monday, December 16th, 2019. I want to welcome everyone. Very glad to have everyone here. Not sure exactly why we have such a full house, but it's always good to have our citizens here. Reverend Pam McCurdy of the Bethany United Methodist Church, 760 Hurt Road, is that right? We'll step forward at this time. Give us our invocation and please lead us in place the flag. So would everyone please stand up.
Praise allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you, and if you're looking for a new church or haven't or haven't, you don't have a church, I'm sure the folks out at 760 Hurt Road, which is at the intersection Hurt and Hicks, there's another church, a fire station, and a vacant lot, so I'm sure they'd love to have you. Thank you so much, and thank you for allowing me to sit down. Agenda changes, we do not have any agenda changes. We have one item that needs to be added to the agenda, so I'm going to ask at this time if someone will make a motion to suspend the rules for the purpose of adding an item to the agenda.
So moved.
Second, motion a second. All those in favor of motion? Terry, have you got us hooked up? Okay. All those in favor of motion? Approve seven zero. And this item that's going to be added to the agenda is a name change for a new, not a new set of apartments, but an apartment name change. Community development. I'll ask Rusty Martin to come up here and just tell us briefly what this is, and then we'll put it up, we'll add it to the agenda and make it item six E. Okay? Just real quickly, Rusty.
All our viewers are nine one ones.
Okay. So let's see, Mr. Cockburn, we need a motion to add this specific item to the agenda, okay?
So moved.
Motion a second. This will be item six E on the formal business agenda. All those in favor of motion, please vote. Approve seven zero. Item three is the Merrill Report, A 2019 four fifty-five, recognition of Lois Lewis, recipient of the Carolyn Creighton Woman of the Year Award from the Keep Georgia Beautiful Foundation, Mr. Welch, and I think we've got a crowd of folks that were here early enough to get front row seats, so.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't know how many of them are out there for Ms. Lewis, but I want to say-
It looks like.
When I came on council eight years ago, she was on the Board of Directors for Keep Smyrna Beautiful, and I don't know how long she had been serving. No one gave me a little sheet sheet on how long you had been there, but she had been there for a long, long time. She has since resigned from the Board of Directors, but I still see her at the events, so she's still very active in the Keep Smyrna Beautiful, but what we're awarding tonight is the Woman of the Year for the Carolyn Creighton Award presented to Ms. Lois Lewis in 2019, and I'm going to step down here and make the award. Very much for your service to the community for a long, long time. Just taking your picture. If someone would like to say some things other than what I just said, please do, please speak up.
Hello, Lois. Well, I'm not a speaker, Mr. Bacon, but I am very much appreciated of this award, and I have been with the Board of Keep Smyrna Beautiful for 27 years. It's been a lot of fun, and I've gotten a lot of pleasure out of it, and I've seen a big development in what Keeps Smyrna Beautiful has done, and I am so proud to have got to be a part of Keeps Smyrna Beautiful and meeting all the wonderful people that I have met.
Lois, I just tell you, the city's man owes you a great debt of gratitude for the countless hours that you and so many of the other volunteers give every single week, and your husband, Bob, he was, y'all were both so dedicated to the city. I used to, when I was able to, and for 12 years I picked up litter on South Cobb Drive, and I think you got a lot of pleasure out of giving me empty sacks and telling me to go fill them up. If it wasn't for people like Lois, our community would not be what it is today. And thank you so much, and I hope you still stay active on the fair board.
Oh, I will, as long as I have my CNI daughter, Linda Hersch, with me. The only reason I've stepped down from Keeps Smyrna Beautiful is because I'm losing my eyesight.
Yeah, yeah. But I can see your eyes are beautiful from here.
Well, thank you. But I'm still a life member there, and I will do anything that I possibly can to help them out in any way.
Lois, thank you so much, and congratulations.
I really, it's something I've really enjoyed doing. Thank you.
One other thing that we have under the Merrill Report, and I can't believe it's been this long, but we have an appreciation award. Let me see if I can open this thing up. Hold on a minute, it looks like, I'm not going to say what this looks like. I'm going to take this thing. If, well, I can't even open it up. It shows how, I don't want to break this thing. I didn't know we gave away diamond lapel pins. It's just solid gold. Let me pull this thing out. Y'all can tell we haven't practiced this. Tammy, she knew she was getting something, but Tammy Sadler Jones, it is a great, great pleasure that we recognize your years of service and commitment to the city of Smyrna. At this important milestone, we express our sincere appreciation for your dedication. People are and will always be our greatest asset. Thank you for all you have done to contribute to success to Smyrna. This is Tammy Sadler Jones, and she has a 10-year service pin, and that's a long time. We thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
And I'll just say this, that Smyrna is the 13th largest city in the state, and we are so honored and proud, and one of the accomplishments that I'm most proud of is the day that we named Tammy as our city administrator, and she does a great job. The employees love her. She's very personable, and she's the direction that our city needs to go. So Tammy, maybe in 10 years I'll come back when you get your 20-year one.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. All right, where's my agenda? Under four land issues, zonings, and annexations, we don't have anything. Item five is previous licenses. Six, we have nothing under previous license. Six, formal business, A 2019 dash four forty-nine, approval to record the official city election results for the runoff municipal election for the city of Smyrna for Mayor and Ward Two Council held December the third, 2019. There were 7,374 votes cast, 20.15% of the 36,597 registered voters for the office of Mayor of 36,597 registered voters, 7,369 votes. Ryan Campbell, 3,605 votes, or 48.89. Derek Norton, 3,764 votes, 51.04%. Council, Ward Two Council, 5,100 registered voters, 675 votes. Andrea Bluestein, 284 votes, 41.64%, and Austin Wagner, 391 votes, 57.33%. Derek Norton was elected to the office of Mayor, and Austin Wagner was elected to the office, Ward Two Council member. If I can just get a motion to approve item six A on the agenda.
So moved.
Have a motion?
Second.
In a second, all those in favor of motion. That's approved seven zero. This certifies the election and the first meeting in January. The new mayor and council will be sworn in, and I believe that's January the sixth, so congratulations to the winners. Item B, ordinance 2019 dash one nine, approval to amend the city of Smyrna's Code of Ordinances, Chapter 106, vegetation by amending Article II tree conservation and replacement. Ms. Jones, the background.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. The city of Smyrna has been working on the proposed amendments to the tree ordinance since September 2018. The proposed amendments address issues and concerns that were identified by the Tree Board, Development Community, and city staff. City staff reviewed the current ordinance and determined that the document was due for revisions since the last update was done in 2008. The development of the revised tree ordinance occurred with a three-step process, which included the following: the establishment of a collection of concerns and comments from stakeholders, comments and input from our Tree Board Revision Committee, and revisions of the Tree Board as determined by city staff. These three steps were vital to the development of the revisions to the ordinance. Community development recommends approval of the proposed amendments to the city's tree ordinance, and our community development director, Rusty Martin, is here to give you more background information.
This is chaired by Tim Gould. Tim, if you want Rusty to make his presentation, I just want to say this, there's a lot of folks that signed up for Citizens Input, and they put down city tree ordinance. Rather than waiting until the end of the meeting when we've gone over this, I will give you an opportunity, if you'd like to speak, after we make the presentation. There may be questions that will be answered where you may not want to speak, but I'll give you that opportunity to speak during this portion of the agenda, so Tim?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Please, Rusty, if you could elaborate on the ordinance, please.
All right. This has been about a little over a year process. We started back in September of last year, and we have met quite a bit over the year to get to this final proposal that's here in front of you all today. We did have a public hearing with the Planning and Zoning Board. They reviewed the request and recommended approval by a vote of four to one. With that, I'll get into my presentation for you. When we got into this process, we thought it'd be beneficial to set up a tree revision committee. That committee was made up of seven voting members. Three of the members were from the Smyrna Tree Board, Kate Connor, Harrison Aiken, and Jean Manke, and then we had two representatives from the Development Community, Chris Poston with Treighton Homes and Brad Thompson with Price McLean Homes. They do a lot of work in the city and understand the city very well. And then we had two voting members from staff. It was Ken Sudrith and myself. Fortunately, we got through all the voting items before Ken retired in May, so we didn't have to add anybody else to the committee to resolve issues. Other key contributors are Joey Stobbs, he was a project manager for the project, Caitlin Crowe, and then we hired an outside consultant, Bill Caldwell, to help us address code issues and do assessments for other municipalities and how our code matches up. In addition, we had Robert Brett Schneider, our city arborist, part of the process, and then Robin Phillips was an alternate for the Tree Board if none of their members could attend. I just want to thank the Tree Board and staff and the representatives from the Development Community. We spent a ton of time on this request. We met a total of 26 times over the years, over the year. Those are all the lists of the meetings that we had. We had 26 total meetings, 12 of them was with the review committee, and those meetings lasted anywhere from two hours to two and a half hours. So we went through every issue, we dissected every issue, we had debate back and forth about that issue and how it's the best way to resolve those concerns. If you add in the PNZ Board and then the Cow meeting and the council committee that was set up, you can add another five meetings to that, so we're up to 31, and we spent just as much time in those meetings discussing these issues. The most discussed topics we had within those meetings, the first thing was how does our ordinance compare to other cities? We looked at Alpharetta, we looked at Atlanta, we looked at Sandy Springs and Marietta. How does our ordinance compare? We looked at how do these other municipalities count their densities for their sites, their tree density? Some communities do it by canopy coverage, and some communities do it by a per-unit measurement of the tree trunk. In addition, the next major topic was discussing how to apply the ordinance to single-family residential and duplex lots, which are currently exempt under our current ordinance. This was a major policy change. It took a lot of vetting and a lot of discussion to work through and figure out what would be the appropriate path for this community. And then, obviously, the last item we talked a lot about was requiring tree removal permits for actual single-family homes without development permits. Finally, we had to establish what was the ultimate goals of the tree ordinance revisions, and the Tree Board really wanted to concentrate on preserving existing trees versus adding new canopy. So we were looking at opportunities to save existing trees during the development process by eliminating or reducing requirements that may push developers to remove trees versus saving them, and then also addressing trees on residential lots by requiring tree removal So when we started the process, we identified the issues and concerns by each of the boards and by the different groups that participated in the committee. First, the Smyrna Tree Board identified its concerns, the first being dealing with single-family and duplex lots exemptions from the tree ordinance, the second, dealing with boundary tree definitions and requirements, number three, specimen tree and specimen tree stand and historical significant tree definitions and requirements, four, dealing with the tree density requirements, five, dealing with maximum specimen tree recompense requirements, and finally, fees related to tree removal. And as we go through this, all these issues within the tree ordinance, you'll see how they all play out. Community Development identified its issues that it wanted to address, the first being dealing with the maximum specimen tree recompense requirements, number two, require single-family building permits to meet the requirements of the tree ordinance, number three, a reduction of the critical root zone requirement to preserve specimen trees, number four, improve the tree care and maintenance prescriptions for trees with critical root zone encroachments, number five, improve tree planting requirements for residential lots and buffers, and the last one is an update to the technical standards for the tree ordinance. And when you go through all these, you can see a clear distinction. The Tree Board was more of a policy-based change versus technical changes, which is what the staff wanted to see. But there was a lot of overlap between those concerns, and we had identified them with the specimen trees and the boundary trees and so forth. Now we'll get into the major changes that are proposed within this ordinance. The current ordinance applies to all properties with development permits and exempts existing single-family lots with less than 50% lot disturbance. So right now, if you are not doing any development activity on your site and you own a single-family lot, you are exempt from the requirements of the ordinance. You can take down your trees, no penalty, no permit, nothing. If you have a development permit, a building permit on your site right now, and you have a single-family home, if the disturbance created by your development activity is more than 50% of the total lot area, you would be required to meet the requirements of the tree ordinance, which would require a tree survey, tree protection plan, and then replacement plan showing that you meet the site density. With this proposed ordinance, we are proposing that it would apply to all properties with the development permit and exempt single-family lots with development permits for building additions or accessory structures. So if you are building a new home on a single-family lot, the ordinance will apply to you. If you have an existing home and you're adding to it or adding an accessory structure, then you would be exempt from the permit requirements or the tree ordinance requirements for your lot. That's a significant change, but we thought that a new building permit was a clear delineation for the most part of the development community from homeowners that are improving their And I give you examples between tree removal permits and then meeting the requirements for development activities. So with a tree removal permit, which means little or no development activity associated with the removal of a tree 24 inches or larger, you must submit a tree removal permit application and then replace that tree with either a two-inch caliber tree or pay $400 recompense in the tree bank. If you have to meet the requirements for a development permit, you'd be required for the issuance of a development permit for a new single-family home, you'd be required to submit a tree survey, tree protection plan, specimen tree assessment, and a tree replacement plan, and you must meet the tree density and specimen tree requirements for the site through conservation, tree planting, or recompense into the bank. And finally, you must provide tree protection during development and provide tree maintenance for any planted trees. Tree removal permits, moving from an ordinance centered on development activity and permits to requiring tree removal permits for trees over 24 inches in size on all properties regardless if there's a development permit has been issued. This is a significant change, so if you own a single-family lot now, you are exempt from this requirement if you have no development activities. This change here will require, if you are removing a tree 24 inches in diameter at four and a half feet off the ground, you will be required to recompense that tree with either a new two-inch caliber tree or pay $400 in the tree bank and get a tree removal permit to remove that tree. This applies to living and healthy trees. If you have a hazardous, dying, declining, or diseased tree as determined by the city arborist, then you will not have to get a permit to remove that tree. You can remove that tree with no penalty.
Rusty, have you got the 24-inch?
I think Mr. Gould's got it.
Okay. We spent a lot of money on this.
For the most part, it's almost as big as this podium, so just to give you some context of what that means, so I'll leave this up here in case anybody wants to use it as an The next two bullet points are the issues I already discussed earlier. Also, if you decide to replace it with, if you decide to replace or remove tree with a two-inch caliber tree, you have 60 days to plant that tree from point of removal, or if we're in the summer and they want to talk to staff about planting in the fall or during the planting seasons, we'll make those accommodations for them. Removal 24-inch tree or larger without a permit would require double the recompense, so two-two-inch caliber trees or $800. So we can talk about when y'all want to enforce that. I'd imagine there would probably be a grace period to this as we move forward, so residents can understand they need to get a permit as opposed to just jumping on that right I created a couple of examples so we understand what the impact of the tree removal permit is per tree removed. Current ordinance, there is no required permit for tree removal on single-family lot. If we estimate tree removal cost for a 24-inch tree to be either $750 or $2,000 depending on location of the tree and the- seven hundred and fifty or two thousand dollars depending on location of the tree and the 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 type of methods need to remove the tree, that's how we came up with those costs. There's no required recompense because there's no permit required. So right now, the only cost associated with removing that tree is the actual cost of removing the tree. With this proposed treat, this proposed change to the tree ordinance, we would propose a tree removal permit of a hundred dollars. And that is that permit cost is in relationship to the cost associated with having the arborist come out and inspect the tree and then inspect the planted tree to make sure it's it's planted appropriately. So you are paying for the arborist's time to come out to the site twice. The tree removal cost will hold the same. And then recompense of a two-inch caliber tree, we we valued that tree at about two hundred and eighty dollars. And then, so when you look at the permit cost and the value of the of the tree that's being planted back, the total cost for tree removal jumps up to, you know, eleven hundred thirteen dollars on the low end to two thousand three hundred and eighty dollars on the high end. It's a net change in the cost of about three hundred and eighty dollars total. And so that's a hundred dollar permit and then the two hundred and eighty dollars for the tree. If they decide not to plant the tree and they want to pay the four hundred dollars into the bank, then you're up to five hundred dollars on that. And remember, that is just for a twenty-four inch caliber or twenty-four inch tree. As we move through these, we are proposing some significant changes to the definitions within the tree ordinance. The first, dealing with the critical root zone. Our current formula is one and a half feet per inch of DBH. And we're proposing to change that to one foot per inch of DBH. So that critical root zone is going to shrink. And what that does is it takes those trees that may have impacts during the development process that are identified on tree plans that probably have twenty to twenty-five percent encroachment that may be removed at that point, just at the at the planning phase, and allows them to be assessed and maybe provide more more billable area and be able to preserve those trees down the line. Boundary trees, boundary, the the boundary trees definition is 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 tied to the criteria of a specimen tree. This now, which started at twenty-four inches and anything above and had at least ten percent of its critical root system in the adjoining properties area. The change we're proposing is to classify boundary trees as specimen trees. So that changes the size requirements and we'll we'll see those later on in the presentation. But and it also has to meet the requir- the the health requirements of of a specimen tree. Development activity, we added more development practices to the definition to clarify and strengthen the definition. Overstory tree, we modified the definition of the overstory from based being based on tree height to being based on ground surface coverage based on the canopy. So right now, the overstory tree is forty forty feet or above. And we've changed that now to nine hundred square feet of ground coverage. So it has to provide a canopy. It can't be a Leland cypress that's just straight up in the air and doesn't provide coverage. We also added a definition for qualified professionals. This definition increases the number of certified professions allowed to provide tree plans, tree assessments, and tree prescriptions, which provides greater opportunity for more professionals to get involved. Specimen tree requirements, we changed those. We modified the size and species categories to address all species and consolidate the categories. The twenty-inch coniferous tree category was added and the thirty-inch category was eliminated. And those trees were moved to the twenty-four inch category, which I'll show you in a second. These are the four cate- categories for specimen trees. We have a ten-inch category for small ornamental trees. And you can see the species that are listed there. We have a twenty-inch category for the coniferous trees. So those are your arboriety, bald cypress, cedar, china fir, eastern hemlock, and red cedars. And then we have the twenty-four inch category, which are your oaks, your beech, your birch, your ginkgo, hickory, southern magnolia, sweet gum, and so forth. And then finally, there's a thirty-six inch category for your pine trees. So depending on the species of trees, we 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 classify whether or not it's a it's a it's a specimen tree. And then finally, there were five requirements in the existing ordinance that we used to tell us whether a specimen tree was truly in specimen condition. And we eliminated those five and went to you went to using the ISA standards for classifying either a dead, dying, or hazardous tree. And and we'd use those industry standards to make those assessments. Under the existing specimen trees, we we made some changes to those requirements. Existing specimen trees may count towards the minimum tree density requirements if no disturbance occurs within the specimen's root plate. A developer may encroach in the critical root zone of a specimen tree, and it may count towards the minimum tree density requirements at the discretion of the community development director. The developer must provide the following information to the Department of Community Development prior to seeking approval to encroach in the root zone. They got to provide a tree protection plan, which means they got to show how they're going to protect that tree during development. They got to provide a letter from a qualified professional reporting on the health of the tree. And then they got to provide a tree care prescription plan, which is basically a plan that lists certain remediation measures to help preserve that tree during the development process. And then finally, with the specimen tree requirements, if you encro- currently under the current ordinance, if you encroach into the the tree ordinance or into the critical root zone currently, then you would have to bond that tree for a five-year period and and all this. We are eliminating that requirement to to bond that tree because we'd prefer that they provide a tree care prescription plan. It's basically, you know, investing in the health of that tree versus insuring that tree through an insurance policy. The other changes we proposed, the the we're we're dealing with specimen tree recompense. The current ordinance caps caps specimen tree recompense at a hundred inches per project, which disproportionately impacts smaller developments. The proposed ordinance change changes specimen tree recompense to fifty inches per acre, which brings the recompense in line with smaller developments and evenly impacts larger developments. The proposed ordinance allows for the recompense trees that are required to be replanted to be four-inch for overstory, and then we added the three-inch understories when you have conflicts with utilities. Penalties. We eliminated the current penalty structure, which required fines and repaying into the tree bank and everything else, and moved that structure back to the city's standard structure for misdemeanors. Tree planting requirements, we adjusted some some of these issues. The first one being all single-family or duplex lots shall provide the following at the time of certificate of occupancy, a minimum of twelve inches of tree per lot with a ratio of not less than one overstory tree per three understory trees. This is to spread out the the tree plantings throughout the community. We have run into some issues where we've had standard trees saved on a portion of the community on, you know, half the lots within that community. And those trees were enough to count for the density for the entire community. And then we ended up with just having a single tree on the front of the lots for the remainder of the lots. So the trees weren't evenly dispersed through the community, and this is this is trying to address that. Street trees, and this requirement is just dealing with requiring street trees to be planted along the right-of-way and where those locations need to be. And then all replanted overstories shall have a trunk 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 size of not less than four caliber inches. All replanted understory trees shall be not less than three inches in size. And that's to get the bigger trees and 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 have a a fuller-looking canopy. With the tech standards, we improved the example for the density calculation and which included the nets net site area calculation. And then we we provided recommendations for planning and design phases. So we try to walk the designer through the start of the project to plan approval. So these are the examples you need to provide on each plan during the process so we could expedite the plan review process and get them in and out as quickly as possible. And then finally, we provided detail specs for tree plantings, for tree protection, and everything else. So these are best management practices that are recognized by the tree planting industry. That way, these designers have all the information at their hands that they can use to make sure their plan review goes quickly and everything goes smoothly. Next, we updated the list for parking lot trees, street trees, screening trees. We have updated our list to identify which trees are appropriate for for street trees, which trees are appropriate for parking lot trees, which trees are appropriate for using the screen between uses, and which trees you should not be planting on your site. And then finally, we have provided a tree pair, tree care prescription template. So we're providing you the opportunity to use a template if you have an encroachment into the critical root zone of a tree. And you need to provide that prescription plan. We provide all the types of remediation to that tree that you could use. And you'll have to have a certified arborist identify what's appropriate for that particular circumstance. And then I I just showing some examples of of the work that we did on the details to improve the 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 plan specs. With that, I'll be I'll be happy to answer any questions. That's all I got. I know it was a ton of information. We worked a lot on it. And I'm happy you guys are are hearing it tonight.
Thank you, Rusty. I think you we all have a somewhat of a degree or more knowledge about trees at a minimum anyway, right? And working towards our associates in tree care.
You should be experts now.
Yeah, yeah. Rusty, how long you been doing this community development thing in general?
In my position?
No, no.
That I am right now.
No, no, your your general experience.
I've been with the city for thirteen years. I started as planner one, planner two, and now I'm community development director.
Right. So on the, so you've been working in the area and just seeing the effects of our existing ordinance for over a decade.
I manage our our contact with our contract arborists. So I am involved when they submit plans for plan review. We look those over with the arborists. I'm involved when we go out to the site for a pre-construction meeting to identify tree protection areas and how the prescriptions are going to get involved, how the prescriptions are going to be done through the development process. And then I'm involved with him when we go out and inspect the trees that are planted back to meet site density. So we're digging up the root balls to make sure that the cages are removed, the burlaps removed, that the guy wires and every, the, you know, the supports are all there and they're appropriate. And then making sure that we get the appropriate bonds to maintain those trees for two years after they plant them.
Got you, okay. So I mean, the the so much information you just talked about and the tree board, and you and the tree board have been working on it for over a year. But this is not just, I mean, this is something you've professional experience for for over a decade and understand the impacts of our current ordinance and then what the future ordinance.
Yeah, I mean, with anything, everyone's got their opinion on how things should be done. And I don't think the arborist community is any different. So they all have different opinions on what's appropriate and what's not. But I think we had enough discussion that we fleshed a lot of this stuff out to try to have a a good ordinance that's manageable and enforceable.
Okay, thanks.
And and I'd like to say that I may have pushed for this because this is technically my last meeting. And I wanted to see this done before I got out of office and but it's a lot of information. And I know, Rusty, you you've worked hard on it, the committee, the tree board, a lot of folks have put a lot of time in it. But was there one, was there any one development that sort of triggered to get everybody in an uproar? I'll answer yes, because I'm not I'm not running for anything anymore.
I would, you know, I would say, I would say Ward Six in Forest Hills is represented pretty heavily on the tree board, so.
Yeah, on Pine Tree Drive, it was a, all of a sudden, it was gone.
I think, you know, I think that played a lot into it, you know. I think we've had a lot of discussion about this, and we've had a lot of discussion from multiple groups, you know. The the Realtor Board joined in some of the committee discussions and.
And 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 it gets down to property rights, individuals' property rights. And me as a property owner, you know, what do I have to, you know, some, it's been funny over forty years that how often people want government to get involved in certain issues. But then on the other hand, they want to stay out of their business on other issues. So I'm hoping that we have sort of met middle ground here. And and I know that Rusty has spent a lot of time. I do want to ask ten more questions, then I won't ask another question until I ask the next one. Staffing-wise, do we currently have the staff that can spend the amount of time to make sure that that they're that they're doing the right things? I know there's there's not as much property today than as there was forty years ago, but we're running out of land. But are we going to have to hire additional staff to make sure that that this is done right?
I think the way that we currently have it written and the way we're planning to enforce it, I don't think we're going to require additional staff. Because just remember, we have two components. We have the the tree removal permit component and the and the in the development side component. The development side component for from a staffing perspective is not changing.
Okay.
The tree removal side, I wish we had, you know, five years of information that I could tell you, hey, this is, these are issues and the number of trees that come down a year. And I could tell you, yeah, I think we're going to spend, you know, two hundred hours hours a year dealing with tree issues. But right now, I I think we can handle it with existing staff. And we'll do our best to manage that. I mean, you guys impose on us to do the most we can with what we got. And we'll we'll do it, we'll do it appropriately and make sure we enforce it evenly.
And, okay, that's all I have for my next question.
Rusty, can you can you pull the slide back up where you gave the examples of cost? And and I think this is current versus proposed.
Yes.
My question is, I guess, if a developer comes in, and I'm going to make this simple for one acre, we're we're now setting the max for that that recompense at fifty inches, if I'm reading this correctly, on a one-acre lot.
You, yeah, you have, when you have a development permit and they have to meet the requirements for a development permit, you have two issues. You have a minimum tree density per the site, which is a hundred inches per acre. So they have to have a hundred inches of tree, and that's, you know, our measurement of the trees. So they can meet that with existing trees that are being preserved. They can meet that by replanning the site, or they can meet that with a combination of the of both. So they have to provide a hundred inches of tree per acre. If there's a specimen tree on site, which we listed all those requirements for what's classified as a specimen tree, they would have to recompense those specimen trees if they took them down inch per inch up to fifty units per acre.
Okay.
So but here's the, here's the other part of that. If they have specimen trees and they preserve those trees during the development process, they get three times the credit for those trees. If they have specimen trees and they preserve those trees during the development process, they get three times the credit for those trees. So if they save a thirty inch specimen oak tree. And they do the requirements necessary to preserve it during development, they get they get credit for ninety inches of tree. So that that could be their whole site density.
Okay. So and and what I calculated a few minutes ago was the fifty inches at two hundred and eighty dollars per two inches.
Well.
Twenty five.
It would be a hundred and it would the recompense for value in our tree bank is a hundred and forty dollars an inch.
Okay.
The two eighty was just us creating a value for the replacement of a two inch.
So a hundred and forty times in this case, to get to fifty inches, we'd have to have twenty twenty five trees. Am I reading that correct?
No, because it it's based on the size of the tree that they wanna, yes, if they wanna plant two inch caliber trees, they need twenty five inch trees. If they wanna plant four inch caliber trees and they they need thirteen trees.
Fifty inches of trees, though, so we got fifty times a hundred and forty um is seven thousand dollars an acre is what I came up with. That that the potential is there for a developer. Alright, let's switch sides now and go to the private homeowner out there.
Well, can I say one thing?
Sure.
The current the ordinance which the current ordinance which we didn't change, if we went through the, which most developments come through the rezoning process. If they have a stand of trees that are specimen quality and they wanted to make a petition to you guys to have, you know. If they save the whole stand over here in exchange for eliminating two specimen trees over there. The ordinance allows for that to happen through approval of the of the of the mayor and council. So they account for those offsets. If we get into that kind of development, I would imagine. They would probably make those requests to try to save some and and offset the costs somewhere else.
But essentially, we're we're adding seven thou- we we are potentially adding seven thousand an acre in development cost.
Yeah, um, you know, we went back and looked over the last three years of um tree bank fees that we've collected. And I mean, we've had probably two developments a year that that paid into the tree bank and they were they were pretty nominal fees. I think one of them may have been around fifteen thousand dollars, but for the most part, they're like two and three thousand dollar fees.
Alright, now I wanna switch sides and I wanna go to the private landowner. And but and I wanna go out here and and I have a big stand of huge pines in my backyard. And I wanna take down ten of these pines. Every one of them is a is a specimen tree, but I'm tired of breaking up pine straw. Ten pines at at two hundred and eighty now is what twenty eight twenty eight hundred dollars.
Yeah.
Is that what I'm looking to to recompense or plant the new trees somewhere else?
Yes, um. Like I told you before, we would only charge you the hundred dollars permit for your property. If you're moving multiple trees, I'm not gonna charge you a hundred dollars for every tree that's out there. Um but yes, you would be responsible for either re-replanting per each tree you lost, replanning one tree. Or paying the four hundred dollars for each one of those trees if you don't wanna plant it back.
The the audience understands that and and the people understand that. If you go in and and you take down ten trees, but but you're willing to put back up or put back in the ground, ten trees, two inches in diameter. You you meet the requirement.
Right.
And you can do it yourself. You can have it done by a landscaper. You can.
Right.
Whatever, however you choose to do it. Um and it doesn't cost you the the two hundred and eighty dollars per tree. It costs you whatever it costs you to get it put in the ground.
Right. Um. Yeah, it's. We we will work with the citizens to make sure they don't have to be tied to planting. They can plant that tree wherever they want on their property. Um I don't want the misconception that, you know, they're tied to a specific area or anything else. Our goal is to have the tree canopy. And if we're requiring you to plant it in an area you're not satisfied with, well, you know what happens two years down the road? They cut that two inch tree down and we don't have that tree there. So um we have to be cognizant of that and make sure um we're dealing with this stuff appropriately.
We also discussed the possibility of, I don't wanna put those ten trees back in my yard. The concern is that those ten trees get put back somewhere in the city of Smyrna.
Yes, we currently have that in our, we had, it's called alternative compliance. So if you're able to negotiate with somebody else and they want those trees, then I'll be happy to consider that as meeting the requirements. And just remember, the citizens always have an opportunity to to request a variance from the ordinance if there's an issue. Um or if there's an, I'm making a wrong interpretation, they can request to come before you to um to clarify that interpretation and what the ordinance means.
Okay, thank you.
Rusty, I have a question also. So um as councilwoman, councilwoman, councilwoman Welch was just saying um. About the the monies that would be paid for the trees that that are being cut down. If if they chose to, I'm not gonna put them back, I'm not doing it, I'll just pay you the money and it's gonna go into the tree bank.
Yes.
Help us understand what is going on with the tree bank. The money that's going into the tree bank, what is that being utilized for? Because we need them to understand that as well.
The money that goes in the tree bank goes to replanning on public property. It goes into maintaining trees on public property and educational issues. The the tree board has used that for um. To to fund grants for canopy studies and then for informational documents that they hand out at the Jonquil festivals and and so forth. So the money has to be used in a public space. Um right now, it's currently written. But it can't be, it has to be used for for trees.
Rusty, does this um other government entities like school property? Uh tell us how that works as far as uh. As far as the most recent King Springs Elementary.
We asked them nicely to meet the requirements of the tree ordinance. Sometimes they they play play well and then sometimes they uh they do what they need to do based on their budgets. Um but yeah, they're a separate jurisdiction from us, so a lot of times we get the answer of, yeah, you guys don't have any authority over what we're doing.
I wanna say that um and I'm I'm maybe off a little bit. But when they were building the um a bridge that on Gann Road, ended up the contractor that took those trees out along the creek there. Also took out either a hundred and fifty five or two hundred and fifty five trees. And uh just one day I was just driving up the road and all of a sudden I said, my goodness, what the heck? Why is there so much sunlight up here? And man, they had taken every single tree. I hope they do have a, and and I just wanna just bring this up because. Oftentimes governments say they're, um it doesn't apply to them. School boards say, well, we're we're here to educate the children and, you know. And 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 they said, I'm just the contractor, I'm just building that. But they uh they took probably took out more trees at King Springs Elementary School than they've taken out in this entire city in probably the last five years. Um and so we're hoping that they'll replace those. I'm I'm not being critical. I mean, I love our school system, but uh. It's things like that. I also wanna ask you this. Does Cobb County have an ordinance similar to this? Uh and will will we be competing? Uh will we have a good ordinance that doesn't apply to Cobb County or doesn't apply to the city of Marietta? Where we have adjoining property that we could end up not being annexed into the city because um our ordinance is too tough? And do you know, do you know what Cobb County's?
Uh I think our ordinances are pretty comparable. I think our ordinance is probably a little bit tougher. Um but where we're tougher with respect to the tree ordinance, we're. The way we do things is a lot better that so the way we handle development overall is better here. So I think that'll override any issues with the with the tree ordinance.
I I would just hate to see us in the future uh have a piece of property that we could annex into the city. And uh they say, oh, there's no way this is a something that we can't um that we can't overcome. So you you think ours is fairly competitive with Cobb County then?
I don't think the difference is so significant significant that it's gonna affect us truly that that negatively.
And I apologize for not bringing that up earlier during our meeting.
No problem.
Any other questions of uh?
I um I have a couple of questions, Rusty. Um with the tree bank funds, is that, are they used sometimes to plant trees also in? Like the medians in our city, like on Atlanta Road?
Any public property, so a park within the right of way in the medians, yes, that we'll use that money for for those um types of plantings.
Okay, um, okay, um, thank you.
Mrs. Bluestein?
Rusty.
Yes, ma'am.
Um as you know already, countryside and country park were both built on the Campbell plantation. And so we have some huge trees that were part of that plantation. Now, we are reaching a point that we've had one crash through a building. We've had others because of wind and rain and whatever um come down, but those don't have to be replaced, right?
Right. It's gotta be a living, healthy tree. If it's based on ISA standards, if it's classified as a dead dying disease or hazardous tree. Then you're not gonna be penalized and have to replant that tree.
Okay.
So basically, what you're saying would happen is you would give us a call and say, hey, I got a tree that's potentially hazard hazardous. Can you guys come out and look at it? And we'd come out and do an assessment of it and say, yeah, that's a hazardous tree. If you wanna remove it, go ahead and do it.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Rusty?
One more uh one more question, if you don't mind, Rusty, just build on what the mayor asked you. Um a lot of times folks will have I've heard folks compare our ordinance maybe to the city of Atlanta's ordinance or Alpharetta's ordinance. Um I know it's hard to compare, but can you do some kind of little bit comparison? Because I think the concern is that we're overstepping with these changes. And my impression is that we're not. We're making some incremental changes that make sense, where though some other cities are much more prohibitive. Um with their ordinance compared to what we're proposing.
I mean, with the city of Atlanta, I think their their ordinance may actually prohibit you from being able to remove a tree from your property. Um are these proposed changes don't prohibit you from removing the tree? You can remove the tree, you just have to plant it back one way or the other. Um city Alpharetta, I think we're 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 pretty close to being comparable to them. Um they just do things a little bit differently than we do.
And isn't the thing with Alpharetta, though, is there, what I hear is they're they're difficult to work with, right? They 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 don't flex much and and where what we've done well here in the city of Smyrna is look at something from a kind of a bigger perspective and. And work with the developers or homeowners when questions uh come up.
I mean. I mean, my philosophy is always try to get to a yes. And and that's for property owners to try to get them so they're satisfied with what what the deal is. So if they run into an issue, um we will sit down, talk to it, talk about it. And we'll try to figure out what the intent of the ordinance is and how we can do that to make sure. The property owner is happy with what's going on. Um, you know, on the development side of stuff, it's a little bit tougher because you have somebody that's coming into the community, doing something and moving on. So you can't, you can't be as flexible with them with respect to some of that stuff. Because if you disturb a tree and you damage a tree, that next property owner, the property owner who buys the house from that developer is. Is gonna have a cost that's gonna, you know, that goes up exponentially now that there's a house that's ten feet from the from the from the tree. And they gotta get a a crane to take it out and all that stuff. So, you know, if there's damage, we ask them to remove it because we're trying to limit exposure to the next homeowner that's buying that property from them.
No questions for Rusty?
Rusty, remind us all again how how you're gonna educate citizens about all these changes.
We're gonna, yeah, that's a tough one. I mean, you know, not everybody uses social media, so not everybody um. Uses all the ways that we inform citizens. I mean, we will put it on our website, on the front page of community development. It'll be part of our frequently asked questions. And uh and like I told you before. For the first year, I'm not interested in penalizing people. If we run into an issue, then we'll figure out how to come into compliance with it. And we'll try to educate word of mouth. And hopefully, we can um get the tree board during our during the Jonquil Festival to spread the word as well. And maybe pass out flyers so people understand what's going on.
I would hope one of the first things we'd do is we'd send out letters and notifications to all the tree companies and let them know, hey, we got the ordinance, so y'all need to.
We can do that.
Yep. Okay, any other questions for Rusty? Uh but there's some folks that have signed up for citizens input uh specifically talking about tree ordinance. Uh and this is not a public hearing, but uh, you know, if if you're here just for that issue and would like to make a public comment, you can come forward. Uh I know Mike McNabb is uh is the first on the list and says city tree ordinance. Um anybody here that's just for that, um I'm gonna go through the list at the end of the meeting anyway. But I'll just give you an opportunity if you wanna say something now, to come forward and just tell us who you are, where you live, and any comment that you'd like to make.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Mike McNabb, seven fifty Austin Drive, Smyrna. Um if I can use this expensive prop. Um my concern about the ordinance is kind of twofold. And one is that we don't over penalize people that have a heavily wooded lot. I have thirty two trees that are larger than this on my property. I have six trees that two people can't reach around. So I wanna be sure that the new ordinance doesn't penalize me if I have to take out and thin a tree because the grove is getting too thick. Does that, if I still have the minimum density of fifty inches per acre, I'm okay. Is that correct? In other words, I don't wanna be held at the current density if I need to thin my trees and there's, I have a lot of them.
If you're required to get a tree removal permit without any development process, then yes, you would have to plant a two inch caliber tree in place of that.
Okay, then that's one of my concerns. My concern is that it's the this ordinance as written penalizes people that have maintained the tree canopy, the community canopy for all this time. Through no help through the city of Smyrna, by the way. Nobody's come out to trim my limbs. Nobody's come out to pay the water to water those trees. So keep in mind that we're penalizing those property owners that have maintained an abundant tree canopy. Because now if we have the audacity to try to thin that canopy, we've gotta come back and plant more trees. I I just don't think that's correct. The other thing, and I don't intend to do this, because I bought my property because of those trees. I don't intend to thin those trees. I like those trees. They are a community asset. But I would ask you and urge you to think about the fact that you cannot preserve something that you make a liability. Trees are a community asset. Let's incent the property owner to keep those trees and nurture those trees. But the ordinance as written is about penalties and about process. And I understand that for new development. That's very necessary. But what it doesn't think about is the existing property owner that's got an overabundant group of specimen hardwood trees on their property. That you then create, because what you're gonna do is you're gonna have more trees cut unnecessarily when that property goes to sale. Because I promise you what's gonna happen. It happens in Alpharetta, it happens in Atlanta, it's happened in Charlotte and Columbia and lots of places. When you go to sell your property and it's a heavily wooded lot, the people the people buying the property many times will tell you. We'll pay you X more if you'll cut the trees, the big trees, before we buy the property. Good luck on enforcing that. I would never cut my trees because I value, they're the value to me. But if you make trees a liability, you're gonna wind up getting specimen trees cut unnecessarily. Because it's gonna mean more money in the pocket of the people that are selling the property. And you have to think about that. I would ask that you table this ordinance so we could look at incentives to property owners to maintain that tree canopy that's already there and growing and flourishing. As opposed to penalizing and turning them into a liability, because that's what this tree ordinance does.
Mike, is is there anything else in the ordinance other than other than that issue? Uh it's um you. It's, you mentioned table it because of that.
Right.
But is there anything else in there?
No, I like the fact that we're moving in the area of trying to better refine what a new developer has to do with coming in and buying properties. But as long as you leave heavily wooded lots and you make the trees a liability, you're going to wind up getting more trees cut when property turns than would otherwise happen. So you're doing the very opposite of what you're wanting to do. You're creating a commercial incentive to cut these canopy trees at the time that the property is being sold because you can get more for your property because they don't come with that liability with all the restrictions. You need to think about that. I would ask that we table the motion. I think there's things we can do to incent the existing property owner and the new purchaser to keep those trees. And we can put it in the ordinance.
Thank you. We have two folks, and I have, these are wonderful names, there's no way I can even, Christina. They live at 1663 Herlong Road, or Harrington Road, is that you?
Yes.
Didn't I meet you somewhere?
Maybe.
Okay, okay. I mean, nothing, okay.
So hi, my name is Tina, I'm 16 years old, I go to Campbell High School, I'm from Ward 7. And I'm just, I'm not an expert on all of the technicalities of what a tree ordinance should entail and everything by that, about that by any means, but I just want to speak about why trees are important to me and to incentivize you guys to, you know, do something like we are doing or trying to do, to take care of the trees and stuff. Yeah, so in my backyard recently, just a personal little anecdote. I had a, we have a creek in our backyard, there were a lot of trees all around it. And just one day, they were like gone. And that was because some, I guess, development came in from the neighborhood next to it and they decided to cut them all down. They're not being replaced or anything, I doubt they're being penalized in any way. And it was just a really sad moment for me because I used to play in those trees as a kid. And there are a lot of reasons, I'm sure you guys know why trees are important to a community. And I just wanted to emphasize that I stand for some sort of action to help conserve and promote trees in Smyrna. And something that, as I'm getting older, like, you know, should I stay in Smyrna, should I go somewhere else? And I want to, I want to live in a city that prioritizes sustainability and preserving the natural environment and is on the forefront of that, so, yeah.
Christina, how do you pronounce your last name?
Dirkapsinski.
Do it again?
Dirkapsinski.
Dirkapski, is that Swedish?
No.
Okay. Thank you though, thank you. And you are, you can come up, so, and do you have the same last name?
Yes.
And what's your first name?
Natasha.
The Koff?
Natasha.
Natasha?
Yes.
Okay, thank y'all for coming, Mrs. Gould.
So I'm Natasha, I'm an 18-year-old student at Campbell High School in Ward 7. And we just got back from attending the education awards. And I saw the profound role that our beautiful schools play in shaping our Smyrna community. And this brought to mind some stories of the trees within our schools and community because I remembered how, as a child, I went to Covenant Christian School right down the road and my friends and I used to play in the trees and pretend that that was our home and we were a family living with the trees. Another one of my friends who went to King Springs, she was telling me how when she first came to the school, she used to go on the playground and she was shy, so the trees were her first friends. And she recently went back because King Springs had to cut down a lot of those trees because she wanted to say goodbye, which I felt was really sad. And I remember when I was little also, whenever the trees, they had to cut some of them down to make wood chips out of it and we were really sad when they left. And so throughout my life in Smyrna, the trees have been silently there to support the people, but especially the children. And so I think it's very important that we return the favor and stand for our trees and our future.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor.
I just wanted to say this, this is, I've already told you all, this is my last probably full meeting. It just gives me so much joy to see two kids come up here and talk about the environment and talk about what the trees mean to them. And to hear somebody say that when they were... Mr. Nord.
I was just going to say, everybody needs to know that Natasha, what she didn't say was she was one of the award winners and has a 4.7 GPA.
All right. Was there anybody else that, that came to talk about the tree ordinance specifically? I just, not that it matters, but it does. How many people are here tonight just because of the tree ordinance? Or that was the main reason why, you can raise them up. I mean, that's, it means a lot, I think, to all of us to have people that care about their communities. All right, Mr. Gould.
Without any other, any other questions from anybody in the council or?
I would hope that there's some way that we can approve this tonight with, in adding a stipulation that Mr. McNabb, where we can go back and look at that, because he does make a good point. If you got a heavily backyard full of trees, that you may be doing an injustice to some of those trees because they're going to die because there's so many of them. There's got to be a way that we can include that. Yep.
I think one of the things Rusty had indicated, you know, if the ordinance passed, then how does community development enforce it? And how do we learn, you know, in the first six months or a year of how this will play out? So perhaps we can, through a policy, can ask Rusty with community development to handle it in a particular way, which such as what you said, Mr. Mayor, if there's somebody with dense, you know, densely wooded property and they have a particular situation, Rusty can probably use his discretion and handle that.
And if I may just say one other thing, I think that Rusty and the entire group have worked extremely hard at putting this together. And I would hate for us to put this off, but I do understand that what Mr. McNabb is saying, I understand that. But I do believe that Rusty, community development, and Tree Board and others will come together to make this work for the community, and that's an important thing, so.
I want to say one more thing as well, Mayor. We discussed, and the mayor appointed a group to discuss this ordinance. One of the things that came out of it was a discussion where we can revise our ordinance to put these trees and essentially do a grant program to private homeowners. If they want a tree in their front yard, that they can come to the city and request that a tree be put here, that the potential is there for us to set up a program where we'll provide them with that tree. And that's one of the, you know, maybe one of the incentives that we can look into. I do think that Rusty can work on that, and I think we should work on it. I think Mr. McNabb brought up a good point. He lives fairly close to me and I'm in a similar situation to his. I have a lot of big trees on my yard and on my adjacent property. And I'm all for trees, I love to keep the trees. And I certainly don't want to punish any of the people anywhere in the city, Ward 4 or anywhere else that are simply trying to maintain the tree canopy. But, you know, at times, trees need to be thinned out to prevent disease and so forth, so that's all I have.
Okay, with that, I just want to thank Rusty and the Tree Board and the other folks that are involved in the process because it's been over a year working on this. And it's one of the great things I think about our city is that when folks do get passionate behind an issue, whether it's trees, schools, or name it, list goes on, those groups are really what make the issues stick for the long haul, right? It's really not probably us up here or the city government that makes it happen. It's really the community involvement that really makes the change. So appreciate all the time and effort that everybody's put into this, so. With that, Mr. Mayor, I move to approve item 6B, ORD 2019-19, approval to amend the city of Smyrna's Code of Ordinance, Chapter 106, Vegetation by Amending Article 2 Tree Conserv- Conservation and Replacement.
Motion to second to approve this amendment. Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion? It's approved 6 to 1 with Ms. Bluestein voting in. Item C, under Formal Business, is ordinance 2019-26, Approval to amend City Smyrna Code of Ordinance's Chapter 66 by adding Section 66-17.1 prohibiting smoking within the downtown design district area. Ms. Jones, the background.
Numerous studies, including those published by the Surgeon General of the United States and reports from the Environmental Protection Agency have shown that secondhand smoke is a cause of heart disease and lung cancer in healthy non-smokers, a major contributor to indoor air pollution and particularly harmful to children, elderly people, and people with allergic issues. Accordingly, the mayor and council of the city of Smyrna find and declare that the purpose of this article is to prevent, to protect the health and welfare by prohibiting smoking or using an electronic smoking device in all public places within the downtown design district. The regulation of smoking pursuant to this article does not apply in the following places: private homes, private residence, and private automobiles, retail tobacco stores and tobacco businesses, a designated smoking area in a place of employment, a designated smoking area in a public place, banquet and meeting rooms when these rooms are being used for private functions. And finally, number six, cigar specialty shops as defined by Section 6-80. Staff does recommend approval of the ordinance.
This is also under Mr. Gould's chairmanship. And if you're asking what I'm doing, I want to get a picture with these two girls.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, but we need Rusty.
We're in good shape when you've got kids like that, so. Okay, where were we?
We are on item C, and maybe I'll ask, the general idea of this is the city, we had created an area around the downtown, the restaurant district. And within that district, a few restaurants recently have decided to go smoke-free with their own choice. And in support of their efforts, we were considering expanding a, including a smoke-free area within the downtown design district. And this would allow any current business owners to decide to go smoke-free, but it would also, any future businesses coming into that area would have to be smoke-free also. It does not affect anything outside of this area. And Scott, would you just mind describing the geographics of that area?
Sure, it goes roughly from Windy Hill Road down Atlanta Road to Concord. And on both sides of the road encompasses the businesses that are located there.
Tim, can I say something, because we've been talking about this for a long time. And I've been talking about it for several years with the ownership of the restaurants in the downtown, Atkins Park and the Tavern. And they basically wanted us to do their dirty work. They wanted us to adopt an ordinance that prohibited smoking when in fact state law allows any proprietor, manager, owner of establishment, it's left up to them, in which it should be, that they can, they can have smoking or no smoking. It's left totally up to them. But they didn't want to take that step, so we've, you know, and I finally told them, they asked me, could I do that before I went out of office? I told them, no, I wasn't going to do it. So on December 1st, they took it upon themselves not to have smoking at all. So this is going on day, what's, 15, 16? And I think it's been a change, I think it's been much healthier down there. But it was their decision. So this ordinance would prohibit, and what they were concerned about is this, is that now that we have, we have bitten the bullet, we've decided to go that direction, we want some protection that somebody else doesn't come back in and open up a smoking place right next to us. So I think the council's wise, and if we pass this, that will eliminate. And it doesn't, I think there's three smoking establishments in Smyrna now. Varner's, the Timbers, Doc's, and I think maybe the Moose Lutz, so there's four. Those will not be affected, it's not, they're not in the downtown. So this shouldn't make everybody happy for a little while, so, if it passes, so.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I guess I'd ask if any other council folks have comments or questions?
Yes, I do. I understand what we're doing, and I've said this before when we actually bought this forward, before. The state law also gives us as a city the authority to enforce it even further, to make it a citywide ordinance as well. And I think that when we start discriminating against certain or dividing, it makes this issue even more difficult, in my opinion. I believe if we're going to do something like this, it can be done statewide. If Atlanta can do it, if Savannah can do it, if New Orleans can do it, and San Francisco can do it. I don't understand why Smyrna, Georgia cannot be a smoke-free city, so.
Any other discussion, comments? Mr. Gould?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So with that, I'd like to make a motion to approve item 6C, ORD 2019-26, Approval to amend the city of Smyrna's Code of Ordinance, Chapter 66, by adding Section 66-17.1 prohibiting smoking within the downtown design district area.
Got a motion second. Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion? Approved 6 to 1, Ms. Blackburn votes against the ordinance. Item 6E? D, I'm sorry, she should have never taken her mug last. 6D is Resolution 2019-07, Adoption of a Resolution conveying the right, rights of way on Crimson Maple Way, Steel Pine Bend, White Cypress Court, Wendy Elm Drive, Smyrna Grove Drive, and Smyrna Grove Place consisting of 8.87 acres to the Smyrna Grove Homeowners Association, HOA. Because the said rights of way are no longer needed, the resolution authorizes the city to convey whatever interest it has in the property to the Smyrna Grove, HOA, with all necessary utility easements for city access and maintenance of the water and sanitary sewer system. Ms. Jones, the background, please.
The Smyrna Grove subdivision desires that its neighborhood be a gated private community. Smyrna Grove neighborhood has agreed to accept the streets within the community as private streets owned and maintained by the homeowners association. The Smyrna Grove neighborhood has demonstrated the financial ability to pay all future maintenance... The Smyrna Grove neighborhood has demonstrated the financial ability to pay all future maintenance of the streets. No substantial public purpose is served by requiring the streets within the Smyrna Grove subdivision to be publicly maintained because the streets are not necessary for the public street system within the city, and removal of these streets from the municipal street system is in the best interest of the public. The city is authorized to convey whatever interest it has in the streets to the Smyrna Grove neighborhood, subject to establishment of necessary utility easements for city access, maintenance, and construction of the water and sanitary sewer system that is under the streets within the Smyrna Grove subdivision. Staff does recommend approval of the resolution.
Okay, this is in Ms. Wilkinson's district, Ms. Wilkinson.
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, I'd like to ask if Rusty has anything prepared to say, to give him an opportunity to talk.
No, Ms. Sadler-Jones summarized the request perfectly, I don't think I can add anything else that's beneficial to the discussion.
Okay, all right, thank you. Well, at this time, I'll read the resolution, whereas the Smyrna Grove subdivision desires that its neighborhood be a gated community, and whereas, according to city policy, public streets cannot be gated and closed to the public, and whereas, Smyrna Grove neighborhood has agreed to accept the streets within the community as private streets owned and maintained by the homeowners association, and whereas, the Smyrna Grove neighborhood has demonstrated the financial ability to pay all future maintenance of the streets, and whereas, no substantial public purpose is served by requiring the streets within the Smyrna Grove subdivision to be publicly maintained because the streets are not necessary for the public street system within the city, and removal of these streets from the municipal street system is in the best interest of the public. Therefore, it is resolved as follows: One, the Smyrna Grove subdivision may be a fully gated community; Two, all streets within the Smyrna Grove subdivision will be private, and all future maintenance responsibility that is not required to be done by the builder or developer shall be done by the Smyrna Grove Homeowners Association; Three, the city is authorized to convey whatever interest it has in the streets to the Smyrna Grove HOA, subject to a reservation of necessary utility easements for city access, maintenance, and construction of the water and sanitary sewer system that is under the streets. The streets to be private and conveyed include the following: Crimson Maple Way, Steel Pine Bend, White Cypress Court, Wendy Elm Drive, Smyrna Grove Drive, and Smyrna Grove Place; Five, the city is authorized to enter into all agreements necessary to carry out this resolution, and the mayor is authorized to execute all necessary documents. This resolution was adopted by the governing authority of the City of Smyrna, Georgia, on the 16th day of December 2019.
This is not a public hearing, but I did notice that three folks from Smyrna Grove signed up for citizens' input. I don't know if there's anything that y'all want to say, or, I wouldn't mess it up. But y'all can go and...
Mitch Powell, resident of Smyrna Grove, Candace and Russell. We have, us three compatriots have been kind of representing the community and kind of...
Yep, met with Ms. Fields several weeks ago.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, it sounded like everybody's, what we're doing, I hope is going to be okay.
Yes, sir.
There's overwhelming support from the community. We did a survey vote, and it was...
Like 98%?
98% in favor of retaining our gates. We currently have gates, but it's retaining the gates and becoming private.
Have you found out those two people that were against it?
And they actually have...
Go ahead.
They changed their vote.
They actually changed their vote, and can everybody from Smyrna Grove please stand up?
There you go, good. Well, good deal.
So we are here in support, and we would really like to keep our gates tonight.
Thank y'all very much for coming out and expressing, I knew y'all were here for something, but I didn't know what you were here for. Y'all are awful quiet, so it made me a little nervous, so, but thank y'all. Thank y'all very much.
I just, yeah, I'd like to say a couple of things, too. Thank y'all for your hard work on this. It's been a lot of work since that first meeting that I went to back in July, and I'm glad to see you all here tonight, and it's always been my aim to, to your interest or what I'm in support, to support your interest. And I'm just glad to see that you're getting this resolved, and looking forward to you moving to the next level, getting your HOA established, and so, and thank you again for coming tonight. Thanks.
The last thing I'm going to say tonight, before the next thing I say, this is one of the most significant, I guess, events during my 40-year career, was when the city purchased Hickory Lake Apartments. And we purchased it, I want to say in 2011, and it was right about the time of election, and I said, man, I do not need this. And we invested, I think we paid $9 million for the property, we put another $4, $5 million in there to get it cleaned up, and it was a bone of contention during the election, and I said then, and I'll say it now, we won't get our $15 million back just yet. It might take us 20 years to get it back, but what we got is absolutely great community over there that will be, will have the halo effect, hopefully the same as we've had in the downtown. And I thank y'all so much for investing in Smyrna. Hickory Lake was a tremendous drain on our public safety budget, the fire police were over there constantly, and what we have now is a great community made up of great people, so thank y'all very much for investing in the city. Thank you. Did you get a motion in the second?
I haven't made the motion yet, but I'd like to now, okay. I'm going to make a motion that the resolution that I read a few minutes ago be adopted as read.
Motion in the second. Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion? And now, wait a minute, did y'all think it was going to be anything other than a 7-0? You know how long I've worked on this? Thank y'all very much. Merry Christmas and happy holidays and everything, if y'all can... Item 6E is the item that we added to the agenda, and that's Ashford Woods has requested a name change. Ashford Woods Apartments and Businesses, Ashton Woods requests a change of name for the apartment complex located at 1202 Wexford Hills Parkway. They are asking for it to be changed to Cumberland Point Apartments. Anything else on that, Scott?
No.
Which district is that? Is that Tim Gould's? Okay, Mr. Gould.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If you have any questions or comments by council? Hearing none, a move to approve Item 6E, apartment name change request, 2019-466-1202, Wexford Drive Southeast, name change from Ashford Woods Apartment, DBA Ashford Woods, to Cumberland Point Apartment Holdings LLC, DBA Cumberland Point, with Rochelle Atkins as agent.
Motion in the second. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please vote.
There are representatives from Cumberland Point here? Yeah, thank you for being here this evening.
I'm going to just get a show, I don't know where Ms. Wilkinson went to. Does anybody know? It's approved 6-0, Ms. Wilkinson is absent. Item 7 is commercial building permits, we have done. Item 8 is consent agenda. Ms. Jones, will you please read the consent agenda for council's approval?
The consent agenda reads as follows: Item A, approval of the December 2nd, 2019, mayor and council meeting minutes; Item B, approval of the December 2nd, 2019, pre-council meeting minutes; Item C, approval of renewal with Georgia Municipal Association for 2020 workers' compensation, insurance coverage, and administration, and authorize mayor to sign any related documents. Item D, approval to use council chambers for Cretewood at Vinings Annual HOA Meeting, Sunday, February 9th, 2019, I guess that should be 2020?
Right.
Yes, from 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM. And Item E, approval to use council chambers for the Heritage at Vinings Annual HOA Meeting on Thursday, January 23rd, 2020, from 7:30 PM to 9:30 PM.
They're here motion to approve the consent agenda. Motion in the second. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion? It's approved 6-0, Ms. Wilkinson is absent. Item 9 is committee reports, we'll start tonight with Mr. Louis Wheaton.
Just a few quick comments, particularly to the community, as we're approaching the holiday season, I want to wish you all happy holidays, and certainly a happy new year. Also want to give a note of appreciation and thanks to the Smyrna Police. We had the very unfortunate event over at the Cumberland Mall area this weekend, and Smyrna Police were dispatched to that area, and we want to certainly thank you all for going out there and helping out with that tragic situation, and hopefully we've come to a good resolve there and maintain the strength and the safety and security of our community. With that, I have nothing else.
Mr. Gould?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just one thing I think we'd like to do, the tree board would like to give you something.
Wait a minute.
Gene Manke, and some of the other folks from the tree board, Kay Connor and Sean Martin.
When they say, "Give me something," what does that mean?
Yeah, we want to give you something. All right. Put it upside down? Oh, it's upside down. There we go.
Come down there?
So, this is from you from the tree board...
I'll come down.
For all your support and assistance, and it's from the Tree Scarve Project, so we had it framed for you. So it was done by Janet Harvey and... The toddler goes on the bed.
I think, as I'd said earlier, it's really, you know, one of the great things about the city is the folks get involved and engaged, and it's really the work of the tree board and some of the other community groups really help make Smyrna what it is. And, yeah, thank you for the gesture to the mayor. And one other quick thing I told Councilman Wheaton, that Sean Martin, is if you ever need to learn how to put a program together or organize something, talk to Sean. So the joke is, if you can get folks to knit scarves for trees in August and July in Atlanta, you're doing, you're doing something right, so, so, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Corky Welch?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to wish everybody a happy Merry Christmas and Happy New Year. Remind everybody, if you want to have your pictures made with Santa Claus, to come to Aunt Fanny's Cabin this weekend from 6:00 to 8:00 PM, and we'll be happy to take your picture and send you home with it. That I yield.
Ms. Marilyn Blackburn?
Thank you, sir. Just want to say Merry Christmas and Happy Holidays and Hanukkah to everyone out there, and take time to go and walk through the lights over there, they're absolutely beautiful. We had a great turnout for the home for the holidays, and Max did a good job, pretty proud of you, man. You're good. And also, thank you to Fortis College for inviting me to be their commencement speaker on Friday for their winter graduation ceremony, so that was, that was really very nice. And also, congrats to the recipients of the mayor's educational award. And with that, I yield.
Ms. Andrea Bluestein?
I want to wish every one of you a very Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, Happy Hanukkah, and whatever else you celebrate, you personally celebrate, so it should be a great year for all of us. Thank you.
Mr. Eric Norton?
Y'all thought this room was packed during this council meeting, you should have seen it for the couple hours prior to when the mayor's education awards were going on. It was standing room only of folks getting honored for their volunteer service, the teacher awards, and for the student awards, and it was, it was pretty amazing. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for starting that tradition, I look forward to continuing that, and our schools have a great story to tell, it was a pretty awesome event. That I yield.
Ms. Jones?
I just also wanted to say Happy Holidays to everyone, Happy New Year. Thank you, Mayor, for my 10-year service award, it's been a great 10 years serving you and the citizens of Smyrna.
Mr. Cochrane? Ms. Graham? Ms. Tina? All right, we've got some, we don't have a show calls hearing, we've got folks that have signed up, Michael L. McNabb, 750 Austin Drive, he was here for the Smyrna City Tree Ordinance, he's gone, just want to make sure. Chima Ugamba, did I say that right?
People?
It's close. 3550 South Sherwood, speeding and reckless driving.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just wanted to make some public comments, requesting speed bumps and other traffic calming measures to reduce incidence of speeding and reckless driving on South Sherwood Road, where drivers cut through South Sherwood Road from South Cobb, Smyrna Hill Drive, North Cooper, and Concord Roads. It's in the vicinity of Sherwood Park, speed limit is about 25 miles per hour, drivers frequently go over 60 miles per hour with reckless speeding and drag racing frequently occurring on weekends. Violators include delivery trucks, commuters, Cobb County School buses, traveling well over the speed limit. I've installed cameras in front of my building, and, you know, have dozens of footage of this reckless driving occurring. And I'm not just speaking as an observer, on August 12th, 2019, at 4:19 PM, a driver plowed into my home, 3550 South Sherwood Road, with my four-year-old son and his sitter on the property. Within that mess, you know, we were displaced for over three months, been working with Councilwoman Blackburn, as well as the Smyrna Police Department and the Engineering Department. Over the past three months, they've conducted a speech study, which had unfavorable results. They came back, it was a very rigid framework and methodology that they used, didn't take into account the proximity of the homes to the road that the city approved, the pedestrians, traffic, you know, there are young children in the area, you know, we don't have to, this doesn't have to end up with, you know, somebody being injured, maimed, or death, you know, which the city would be culpable if that occurs, because, you know, I've approached the city over the past three, four months, shared this with my councilwoman, the Engineering Department, and, you know, lots of, you know, provided footage of speeding traffic, you know, that's constant. And, you know, I'm kind of at my wit's end, wasn't sure what the next step to do, and just wanted to voice my... And just wanted to voice my feedback and displeasure with the, with the findings of the speech study. And looking forward to engaging with Ms. Sandra Jones and, you know, whoever's in the Engineering Department. Because this is, this is an issue that, that's very serious, you know. My home was hit. Okay, at 4:00 PM in the afternoon. My son plays in front of the yard. My wife, you know, we can continue discussions.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Stephen Jones, 2823 Spring Drive, comments.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, Mayor and Council. I appreciate this opportunity. And I just wanted to be real brief and just say thank you, Mayor, for your 34 years of service. I know it hasn't been easy. There's been good times, bad times. You've made a lot of hard decisions over these years. And I admire you for that. Probably none of, none of us really know what it's like until you're in the position of mayor, what all is involved. So I wish you the best and blessings on your next journey. And thank you again for all you've, you've done. And I wanted to also take the opportunity to mention Councilman Bluestein. She, she's kind of adopted me into Ward Two. I live in Ward One, but she accepted me to, coming to her wonderful Ward Two meetings. I mean, I benefited so much for those, from those. And she not only was there, but she also had staff from the city that we could ask questions about certain topics. And she really worked hard on those meetings. And I just appreciate your kindness, kindness toward me and answering my questions. And I wish you also all the best and pray blessings upon you. And pray that your next journey in life change or chapter is the best way to say it. Chapter will be fun and exciting and, and rewarding. So thank you.
Thanks, Steve. Natasha and Christina, I think they've already, I think they had a curfew. Those are sweet girls. They really are. Leonard Robinson, 1809 Teasley Drive Southeast. Marilyn Blackburn and Sustainable Smyrna.
Mr. Mayor, City Council and staff, my name's Leonard Robinson. I'm one of the co-founders of Sustainable Smyrna. Wanted to point out that Tina and Natasha are part of Sustainable Smyrna. They're, they're younger members. They help us set up the Candidates Forum. But the reason why I'm here is for Councilmember Blackburn, outgoing Councilmember Blackburn. Couple of years ago, I was, I met her. And we started talking. I was just fresh from California. And I told her a little about my background, and we talked about Sustainable Smyrna, or sustainability. And she asked a question. What would a sustainable Smyrna look like? And so I answered. It's continuously answering, continuously answering. What picked up so much momentum that we're now up to 200 members of Sustainable Smyrna. And the other co-founder is Councilmember Blackburn. She was our champion on City Council, and she continues to be our champion. You know, we had hoped that she got reelected, but it didn't happen. But see, what makes something beautiful, it's not that it lasts forever, it's just that it is. And it was a beautiful time. She was a warrior, she was an advocate, especially for Ward Three. So I just wanted to say thank you, Councilmember Blackburn. I'm still looking forward to working with you. And, you know, we don't, we don't know what the future holds, but we do know who holds the future. For the city, Derek, I'm looking forward to working with you. Sustainable Smyrna's been recognized by the National Football League, the Environmental Protection Agency, the Georgia Environmental Protection Division, ThyssenKrupp, a Fortune 500 company. We've been recognized by a lot of entities. So we're hoping in 2020, we could actually be recognized by the city of Smyrna, because that's our name, Sustainable Smyrna. We really hope that happens one day. And we're, you know, again, looking forward to working with the new City Council, the new mayor, and, you know, even the, the people returning. It's been a great time. I really feel a part of Smyrna. Mr. Mayor, just wanted to thank you for your time, City Council. See, we're not that different. We're both senior citizens. We both like beer, and we both love Smyrna. So we do have some commonalities. So, you know, thank you. But Ms. Blackburn, thank you. I guess now I can just call you Marilyn now. And, you know, Sustainable Smyrna. I'm going to wish everybody a happy Kwanzaa, a Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah. However you choose to festivus, however you choose to celebrate, have a safe and wonderful holiday. Thank you very much.
Thank you. ADG Nancy, 2731 Woodland Terrace, Marilyn Blackburn.
Good evening to the mayor and the people at City Council, all of the members, and also Tammy, very good friend of mine. I represent 2731 Woodland Terrace, Galleria Manor Senior Apartments. We have some of the members here from Galleria Manor. I'm here to just compliment Mrs. Blackburn, someone that I've met a few years ago, and I've been very much impressed with her ability and her outgoing personality. And I took her name and I kind of twisted around. And I said, "Mary Burnt a Black Line in Smyrna." Which means anything that's black is permanent, it's not a red line. And she made a permanent stand here in Smyrna. She may have lost the election, but in my mind, she won the selection because she was selected by God for such a time as this. I am very proud of you, and I commend you on your next venue.
This is either Dave with a smiley face, or Dave V., or Dave U. 3241, is that Collier Gate Court?
Yes, sir.
Smyrna, Marilyn Blackburn.
So my name is Dave Veronica R.
What is it?
Mr. Mayor, it's Veronica R. Think of Veronica and put an R on the end. Veronica.
It just, I just got a V.
I understand. It's hard to read, hard to pronounce.
I would have mispronounced it anyway.
Everyone does. So you're not alone, Mr. Mayor. So, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, members of the staff, Mary-Lac Norton, congratulations. I'm here for two purposes. One is to recognize Councilmember Blackburn for her contribution and to say just a word about that. And the other one is to join Mr. Robinson in expressing a desire to seek a new and stronger and better relationship, or any relationship for that matter, with the city of Smyrna on the issues of environment and sustainability. First, about Councilwoman Blackburn and her contribution. Starting in October of 2018, it was, I started trying to figure out how I could get more actively involved in environmental topics and sustainability with the city of Smyrna. I approached three different council members, none of whom responded in any way other than to refer me to another council member. I finally discovered Sustainable Smyrna through, through the Next Door organization, and that's how I came to meet Councilmember Blackburn. So her leadership, I think, has been instrumental in helping to put environmentalism and sustainability on the political map in the city of Smyrna. I think we've achieved tremendous success with that. As Mr. Robinson said, we're now up to 200 members. That's going to grow to 1,000 members, I believe, within the next year, which will make us a very substantial voting block in the city of Smyrna. Now, to the other point, we have big changes underway in the city of Smyrna. I think the most recent election confirmed that. Half of the people who voted in the runoff, roughly half, voted for change, not a continuation of the status quo. Among the other changes, of course, we have the new mayor, new City Council members. We have three City Council members who I believe are going to be strong advocates of environmental issues and sustainability. We have climate change. I assume we have some deniers who believe climate change isn't happening. I firmly believe, within the next five years, your term, Mr. Norton, we will see continued substantial evidence of climate change continuing. We've got huge population growth. We expect another one and a half million people within the next 15 years. And we've got a drive for more sustainable development. So with all those issues and all those reasons for change on the horizon, I hope we can expect cooperation in order to advance the cause of creating a good environment for the citizens of Smyrna. Thank you very much.
Michael Murphy, 5718 Glanrod Drive, Mayberton, Marilyn Blackburn.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I appreciate this opportunity to come before you. And first of all, I would be remiss if I didn't say that, Mr. Mayor, certainly too, although I'm not a resident of Smyrna, I certainly appreciate your service. And I certainly, along with other members of the council. But I particularly wanted to commend Councilwoman Blackburn. I too had the opportunity of working with her on county projects. And I think we saw evidence here tonight, the importance of sustainability. And through involvement with the group, be, carry some of that information on to the county. We'll be partners, looking forward to working on some joint projects. I know that we have some exciting things on the horizon that I think will be a real uplift. I think too often, citizens don't realize the value of community, don't realize the value of public service. And I say to anyone who has served in office and perhaps did not get reelected, do not feel that you lost. Just feel that you didn't win. And if I would put my spin to the rhyme of the ancient Mariner, it is better to have served and lost than never to, never to have served at all. And I thank you for your service. I think I speak for many residents in Smyrna, but you had an impact even across the line in Mayberton. And I can certainly say that I wish you the very best. And I know that we're not, have not heard of you for the last time. Thank you.
Andrea Bluestein, 2407 Country Park Drive.
Good evening. I'm not sure how I want to approach this. This is the last time that I'll be sitting up on the council chairs during a meeting. I'm sure I can come to other meetings, but I've spent so many years with the city of Smyrna that I'm not sure how, what I'm going to do next. I started out with the mayor's appointment to the Downtown Development Committee. And that was a very interesting program to be in. After that, I spent 10 years on the Planning and Zoning Committee. That was an interesting phase. And then I've spent the last eight years on the City Council. I'm sad, but I, I know something else will happen. So I want to thank each and every one of you for your help. I want to thank the people of Ward Two for the kindness that they have shown towards me. And I want to thank also that young man that was just here a minute ago from Ward One, who always came to my meetings because he enjoyed them. So I hope each of you have a very happy holiday, and we'll see you soon. Thank you.
Marilyn Blackburn, 1034. I need some trace, thank you. I don't, I don't know. There's three people. Yeah, yeah, this is, well, let me answer this. Mitchell Powell Fields and Russell Wheeler. Mike McNabb came back in, but you spoke during the, so you are the last. Yep, so you are the, make sure, yep.
Okay. Mayor, I'm going to ask for something very special from you. Can I have five minutes on that clock? Since I'm the last speaker.
Yeah.
Thank you. Well, good evening. As we approach the end of another year, another term, another decade, and an end to an era, it's time to give thanks. So, thanks to all my fellow council members for your service. It's indeed been a pleasure working with you. And, Mr. Mayor, what can I say about, or what can I say to you other than I truly wish you well? And congratulations on a historic tenure as mayor. But most importantly, to the residents of Smyrna, and specifically the residents of Ward Three, thank you for entrusting me to represent you and serve you on the City Council for the last two years. This has truly meant a great deal to me. It's been an honor and a privilege to serve you. When I ran two years ago, I promised you I would be a true voice for every resident, for everyday residents of Smyrna. And I believe that I've stayed true to that promise. Little did I know the many unexpected obstacles that I would face, but I stood the course because I believe in what I know Smyrna should and could be. Two years ago, we made history. And since that time, from Rose Garden to the Bottoms, from Williams Park to the Sherwood subdivision, and communities in between, we've worked together for moderate density development, a more sustainable Smyrna with clean air, water, soil, workforce housing, transit, and more. And we fought to protect our tree canopy, which I'm very excited that we approved the ordinance tonight. And we have fought to give a voice to the everyday citizen. And yes, most importantly, we have fought for diversity and an inclusive government. But we're not done. We will continue to fight for those ideas that are so important to the future of our city and the quality of life. So now we turn the page to a new year, a new term, and a new decade. And as we enter a new decade, it is time for new beginnings for our city. Where do we see our city in five or 10 years? We don't want to build upon a legacy. We want to move our city forward. And in doing so, we create our legacy. It is my hope that our new council will harness all the potential that this city has to offer and tap into the energy and passion that we saw in this last election so that we can bring new vitality to our city and new energy and passion. My prayers will definitely be with you. Smyrna has an amazing set of experienced, talented, and dedicated employees that I have truly enjoyed working with and getting to know. And with the right leadership and vision, our best days are ahead of us. But please remember and note this at all times, that communication, transparency, and respect is crucial in any leadership. I promise to do everything that I can within my power to help our new team of leaders to bring everyone to the table as we work toward one Smyrna together. Now comes the most difficult part of the speech. Thanking my friends who, put it together, girlfriend, who are so dear to me and have, have stuck by my side through good and difficult times. Some of those friends who started this journey with me long ago are on the other side. And I know that they're with me because I feel their spirit. But for those that are still here, your calls, your visits, your emails, your messages, coffee and wine times, and most important, your prayers have truly sustained me on this journey. I have to thank my guys. I have to thank my godmother, Monty, Jason, the Onabacho family, the Kearns family, the Raisin family, Michael and Vanessa, Deanne Bonner, Dream Grimes, Ryan and Jasmine, Mr. and Mrs. Starr, the Fields family, Olivia, Eric Allen, John Ossoff, Rob Pitts, Dave, Sean Martin, Ms. Nancy, Ms. Joan, the Hearst, and so many people that I will not forget, and especially Joyette Holmes. Now, as for my next calling, I don't know, but I trust in a God who has never failed me and truly orders my steps. You see, Jeremiah 29 and 11 says, "For I know the plans I have for you," declares the Lord, "plans to prosper you and not to harm you, plans to give you hope and a future." So I do believe I was placed in this position for a reason, and it will soon be revealed. But for now, my Smyrna City Councilwoman journey will be fulfilled in approximately 15-plus days. And as far as those who really know me, you know what I always say, keep it moving. So thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you, and God bless you.
Concludes the speakers. Want to wish everyone a Merry Christmas and a Happy Holiday, and we are adjourned at 9:15.
Just think about, you need to think about, what's the minimum?
Mike, it's not me. I got you.
No, but you understand what I'm saying?
I got you. It was the tree board and the committee. You're directing your comments at me. It's not me.
But, but you've got to be the forum, but which?
I put you down as absent.
Thank you.
Thank you. Love you. Let me get this, let me sign this for you. Thank you, thank you. I just thought we just, just adopted the most comprehensive. Those girls have some need. We just, we just adopted the most comprehensive tree vegetation ordinance in the city, and they're saying we ain't done nothing? Who was that guy? It's all right. Thank you. Yeah. I'll be around some. I won't be around much, but I'll be around some. So what do we got here? What else we got here? I signed both of these. Let's see, you have to look and see. What's it? Who's that? Yeah. Hey, Max. Cochran. I thought we just adopted, we just adopted the most comprehensive ordinance on vegetation and tree removal in the city's history. Yeah, but we're not doing anything, we're not doing anything.
I'm just making sure, because this was like 535.